It's much more appealing, so I'm voting for blue.
Okay, so we got?
I'm either.
So we got? One painted, and I'm hearing five not strong opinion. I don't have a strong opinion either way.
Could I also interject here?
Sure.
Please remember that the light poles, the light standards, all that stuff on the baseball dimes are all galvanized. All galvanized already, so.
So you're suggesting we should paint those too?
My point is, my point is you're gonna have a little, you're gonna have some inconsistency.
Greg will be up there painting tomorrow, won't you? Probably? Okay, well, that's a valid point, and I suppose the next thing you're gonna tell us that the, uh, those oil Derrick-looking towers with the big lines on them, they aren't painted blue either, are they?
They're not, no, they're not.
Okay. Trustee Kalinsky, you feel real strongly about that?
The lighting, the lighting poles in the, in the field, are they 190 feet tall?
No, they're not, of course.
Yeah, I, uh...
They're 100 feet tall.
Are they?
They're 100 feet tall, is what I'm hearing.
Hour lines are 160.
Hour lines are 160, so they're, they're up there.
Well, then, I suppose that would be the cherry on the cream pie, wouldn't it? So I'll defer to the either-or.
Who are you deferring to?
I would relinquish to galvanized. If, if the others are also galvanized.
All right.
I was unaware of that.
Are we all okay with that, then? Okay, then, let's go to, are we next at materials? Where we've expressed preference for the wall enclosure. Enclosures, plural, so now we're down to materials on that, and I understand that you sort of might want to leave that to the planner, but I think maybe the Plan Commission members and trustees might have something to say about it. Do you, do you have something that you would prefer? I guess I'm even looking at Mr. Beatty, or would or not? Do you have a, do you have a preference for something?
Yeah, why don't we match my garbage dumpsters?
That's a good point.
Standard rock face block, gray, rock face block. Then you don't have to paint it, there's no nothing, you don't have to worry about it coming off.
Concessions building and stuff, or what?
Just standard rock face block.
But I mean, what are you matching?
Matching the garbage dumpsters, which is gonna be right next to them.
The dumpsters, I agree with that. I was gonna suggest that myself, to match the dumpsters there, 'cause it's gonna be right next, near them, right?
Yep.
Is that, is that colored at all, or is it gray?
Just a standard gray.
Standard gray?
Sure, which, oh, this one. That's the enclosure for the dumpster?
That's just rock faced on the one side, is it?
No, it's rock faced on both sides, just must be shadow.
Yeah, it must be in shadow.
Oh, okay. So it'd match up to that?
It makes sense.
I'd go match it.
Comfortable with that? Anybody disagree? Okay, then, rock face to match the existing dumpster enclosure in color and texture? Fair enough?
Fair enough.
What's next?
Uh, I think that was it, other than the Webco issue. If, if you want us to submit the letter from the Saber Engineers, we'll get that to you, if not tomorrow, by, by Monday or Tuesday.
I mean, I'll, I'll defer to others, I think that's a, just so we can close the door on that, I think that's a reasonable condition. Does anybody disagree? Okay, then, we'll be looking for that. What other decisions are before us? And I'm not trying to jam this along, but we've been working on this a long time. Sean, other stuff that we're missing here?
I, I think that, that could do it for all of the decisions. My stat, my updated staff report does include a series of conditions based on our ordinances for, for wireless towers. This is something that we're gonna probably have to go through to make sure that the applicant agrees to meet each of these conditions.
Has the applicant seen them?
We just received it this afternoon, so I would like a little time. We understand that this permit should be approved by October 7th under the submission date. We are happy to extend that because we know you're meeting on October 8th. So between now and October 8th, between Mr. Macy and Mr. Malarky and myself, I, I'm confident we can work out the issues.
I guess there's, if that's the petitioner's request, is there any reason we couldn't honor that, Attorney Macy?
No, we'd have to adjourn the public hearing again because we have to take input if they want to change the recommendation, and Sean has to read everything into the record at that point.
So, I mean, if that's a request of the petitioner, and Plan Commission members and trustees are comfortable with that, that would seem to be a make-sense thing? Planner Malarky, any exceptions to take to that?
No.
Okay, I mean, if there's not...
Mr. President, I do have to add one thing. At this point, the Commission and board members need to tell the petitioner, like they did last time, if there's any other information that you want. You had your list of five, and they, I think, well, first, is everyone satisfied? They've addressed those five issues to your satisfaction? I see head shake.
The only other one is I want that...
Saber letter.
Confirming later, letter.
Okay, subject to the confirming letter that they've agreed to provide. Is there any other information that anyone feels that they would need at the next hearing? They need to know that, so we come prepared.
I have just one other comment to make. Regarding the, the color of the stone, that it was just normal gray to match the garbage dumpsters, I don't know if that's a, a nice thing to match to. It'd be, if you want this thing to look kind of nice since it's out aways, pick one of those other rock face ones that have a little bit more life to it, we were talking, other than just matching the dumpsters, please? No, I, I think it would be, there's other grays in there. You don't have to go real dark or anything, but just pick anything else.
And again, I, I think we can, we can reach that in the CUP before we come back.
Yeah, just, just deal with that.
If you have confidence in Mr. Malarky, he'll, he'll select something tonight.
Oh, yes, we know who to blame.
You, you heard that request or expectation? I mean, the reality of it is, these are fairly small things. I mean, you can buy it gray and paint it, I mean, stain it to match up, or would or not, so.
We'd rather have...
Pre-colored?
Yeah, pre-colored.
Okay. Understand, all right.
And the last one is, Mr. President, very quickly, if there's anyone who has a condition that is not currently in the report, you have to bring it up now. We can't bring it up at the last hearing because that doesn't give a chance for them to address it, the staff to address it. So if there's anything, and I know you have the draft, do we have a draft report with the conditions?
The draft report does include all the conditions, yes.
Yeah, so you should've all had a chance. So if there's something you've heard, or something you've thought of, like the parking spaces, this is the time you have to bring it up for the potentiality of adding it as a condition. Mr. Malarky, you'd agree?
Yeah, I would agree, and I, I do have a, I'm looking for clarification on one thing. We talked about reducing the number of carriers, the potential carriers, down to three additional besides Verizon, so, and now the amount of parking spaces being disturbed would be fewer. The, the current plans don't show, basically show a 30 by 45 expansion ground area, and so the question is, would you expect the plans to be updated prior to next meeting, or something that happens after as just a condition of approval? A condition of approval that the plans will be updated and reviewed by staff? Or is that something that you want to see brought back for next time?
I'd, I'd be comfortable deferring to staff. What about anybody else? Do we need to, can we defer that to staff or not?
I think so.
Can we be good with that? And one last thing here, Attorney Macy, because this is actually the public hearing. If there is anybody in the public that wishes to speak, I think we need to give them the opportunity, do we not, before we close the hearing? Which we're not gonna, we're not gonna do tonight anyway, but we need to give people an opportunity, do we not?
Yes, sir.
So, there's, sure?
Since we're putting up a wall around the pole, is the landscaping around that wall being addressed? I know we saw pictures of other locations, but is the landscaping addressed?
At the last Plan Commission meeting and Board, Joint Board meeting, it was, it was agreed to that landscaping was not required.
Since it's all on asphalt...
It's all in the middle of a parking lot.
...we don't wanna lose any more parking. We don't, if you're gonna have a nice-looking wall there, I don't think there's a need for landscaping. I think that's what we concluded last time.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak at this time? And please come forward.
Mike Orchard, West 231, South 5205, Hunter's Hollow. Sean, you can correct me if you have this information or not. Lot of good points brought up here, but one thing I haven't seen any data on, or technical data, is the, the base of the tower. The depth of the concrete, the diameter of the concrete, based on the soil conditions. And I know that this is a critical point because, as a former crane operator, I erected a lot of these monopoles. And everywhere we went, it was a requirement that the soil had to be tested, and that determined the depth of the base and the diameter of it. Also, where's the specs on the pole? We hear from the attorney and the, and the petitioners, well, it's not gonna fall over. Okay? What's the gauge of the metal? What's the diameter of the base? What's the diameter at the tip? How many sections are there? This is all technical data, information that should be, or have been, maybe it's been submitted. Has it been?
There's a, there's a full set of plans that have been submitted with, with technical details.
All the detail isn't there.
Okay, so I haven't heard anything about it, that's why I'm asking. So if it's all here and it's approved, that's fine. But there's usually soil testing that's involved to make sure that that base is adequate for that size pole. That I know for a fact. So that's something that should be considered.
All right, did you, are you gonna address his question?
So as, as part of the building permit, the soil, the foundation, along with the stamped and sealed drawings, are provided to the building inspector. So everything's certified, everything's there, so it's part of a submittal for the building permit also.
Okay, a follow-up question. A follow-up question, so you will be submitting that for local building permit? Are there any other approvals that you need to get from any other agencies having jurisdiction or anything in order to proceed?
Other than governmental, that we do for cell towers, aerospace, different stuff that you're not related to. If I get this, I go to the building inspector with drawing stamped and sealed, drawing certain number of sets, and the foundation information, soil information, shows that it's stamped and sealed and passes the muster, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Would address his concerns.
All right. Okay, then, it would appear at this point in time, unless anybody else wishes to speak, it would appear at this point in time that a motion would be in order to adjourn this public hearing and continue it on October 8th, 2020, at the regular meeting of the Joint Plan Commission and Village Board, which would start at 6:30. Is that not the motion we're looking for?
Yes, sir.
And we've got a to-do list. Would someone like to offer that motion?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second? Okay, so the motion is by trustee Stigler, seconded by Commissioner Piala. Everybody understands the motion? And all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So I have that unanimously. Commissioner Buchholz is not participating, so that looks to me like it is seven to zero. That's correct. Okay, that will conclude that item. Thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you back on the 8th of October. Okay? Although you're probably not leaving yet, right? Item 12, I should go backwards. So item 11 was discussion and possible action on the conditional use permit, site plan and plan of operation. So inasmuch as the public hearing is adjourned and will continue, we'll dispense with item 11, and we go straight to 12. Hearing number two notices hereby given at a joint public hearing involving the Village of Waukesha Plan Commission and the Waukesha Village Board, be held on Thursday, September 10th, 2020, following joint public hearing number one, beginning at 6:30 PM at the Waukesha Village Hall, located at W. 250 S. 3567 Center Road. Waukesha, Wisconsin, here proposed conditional use for petitioner Keith Nyman, hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Agent Verizon, located at W. 240 S. 5197 Coonsy Lane, tax key W. A. K. T. 1401997009, to construct a 160-foot monopole cell tower with five-foot lightning rod above for the purposes of telecommunications for Verizon Wireless and other wireless carriers, provided in the market. So the public hearing is open at this time. Planner Malarky, do you want to kind of focus or center us on this issue and this request, please?
Sure. So what's being proposed is a, another cell tower. This would be at the Styx property northwest of Glendale Road and 164. Essentially, they're looking to put a tower in, in the parking lot north of the building. This is the same situation where We Energies and ATC are eliminating co-location on their 345 kilovolt transmission towers. The current tower that's being relocated here is at the south end of Elm Tree Lane, which is about .80 miles to the southeast, and so they're proposing a new tower and ground equipment just north of the Styx facility, as I mentioned. This would be 160 feet. There would be no lightning rod on this one. There'd be room for up to three additional service providers, so a total of four antenna arrays potentially with associated base equipment. Again, the same thing, the monopole would be located in a 15 by 15-foot compound on an existing parking lot island within the parking lot. And the, the associated base equipment would be in a separate 30 by 60-foot fence compound on the west end of the parking lot, which is here. Pull up the drawings. So here's the detailed drawings that were submitted. The compound here is at the, at the west end of the parking lot, and then the, the tower itself is within a landscaped island. I won't go through all the same things we talked about last time in terms of application requirements and things that the municipality, that the village can and can't, can and can't regulate, but I will mention a couple of things specifically. The property is zone B2. Then the proposed site plan meets, and the conditional use meets all the district setback, offset, and area requirements. In terms of parking, it appears that they don't, they're not gonna be disturbing any existing parking spaces in the lot itself. I did look, however, at the, the approved plans for the Styx facility, and it looks like there was 84 stalls approved, including the ones that come to the south property, or just south of their property line here, and it looks like what's actually out there are 82 parking stalls. So I'm not exactly sure where the discrepancy is there, but there's, there's not 84 stalls out there at the, at the moment. There's two major issues with this proposal, however. One is that our new ordinance, our new, our new subdivision ordinance, not, I'm sorry, not subdivision, but cell tower ordinance requires that, as allowed by the state statutes, that the, that the tower needs to be set back at least the height of the tower, so this is a 160-foot tower, it needs to be set back 160 feet from any property line that allows single-family residential use. And so it's good in all directions except to the north. And so the north line is actually, it's a condo division line, but the property directly north is zone A1 and not B2. And A1 does allow single-family residential. It happens to be planned long-term for commercial use, but it's currently zone A1, so it would allow a single-family residence potentially on it. And so that's a requirement of our ordinance, and so they would actually need to seek a variance from the Board of Appeals in order to do that. And so you could either deny the application based on the fact that it doesn't meet that condition, or you could potentially approve it if you had a mind to do so, on the condition that they would need to seek a variance from the Board of Appeals and acquire a variance. Again, they would have to, you know, they, I spoke to the petitioner about this, they understand that they'd have to prove that there's actually hardship here to, to be able to grant a variance to the zoning ordinance in that case. There's also another condition that they don't meet, which is regard to access. And what, what our code says is that the use, meaning the tower, and, and ground facilities shall be located along and have direct vehicular access to a public street. And so they don't have direct access to a public street because Coonsy Lane is a private roadway, and so they'd have to travel that private roadway in order to get to Glendale Road, which is further south, which would also require a variance. So with that said, I don't have anything else to add. I think they, they, they meet the ordinance in, in, in other capacity. Again, this is a very similar proposal to the last, in that it's a separate tower in a fenced area and, and a, and the ground compound that's in an enclosure as well. So if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Why don't you reintroduce yourself and proceed, please?
Attorney Claude Craftcheck, representing Diamond Communications. We understand that we do not meet the permitted requirements in that a variance, two variances would be necessary. We do have a, a private easement from the owners of the property in Coonsy Lane, so we could have access along that property, but we understand that that does not comply with your ordinance. We understand that the setback of 95 feet does not comply with the ordinance. So what we would like to suggest is deny us tonight and send us to the Board of Zoning Appeals to resolve these issues. If we can get them resolved there, we'll come back and, and deal with, with the rest of the details on the CUP.
Okay, thank you. I think probably appropriately, we, before we act on that, understand your request, and Planner Malarky outlined some options, but I think we need to allow for the public participate at this point in time. If there's anybody who would like to speak, this is a public hearing. Please come forward.
Mike Orchard, West 231, South 5205, Hunter's Hollow. Yeah, I understand they're asking, or they have to go before Board of Appeals, but for a variance, but variances, the Village of Waukesha are for hardship cases, period. And as a resident for 30 years, I don't see any evidence of a hardship just because they can't meet the standards to put up a pole. So if we go by the current ordinances we have and restrictions, they're just gonna have to find another place to put it. That's just business. But my opinion, there's absolutely no hardship here. So I guess that's up to the Board and the Board of Appeals. So we'll see what happens.
Thank you. Other comments from the public, please? Procedural question, then, I guess that I, yeah, go ahead.
Can I just address that?
Well, sure.
We understand what the standard is, and we agree with you, sir. You know, I, I don't know that we can prove a hardship. We, we, and if we tend to, wanna go this route, we, we understand that that's the burden we have to meet. So that's, that's in the purview of the Board of Zoning Appeals and ultimately the Circuit Court, if it gets that far. But we are looking, exploring other locations. We think we have another suitable site that would not require a variance. In fact, we've submitted an application to Mr. Malarky for that as our Plan B. So it's, it's likely, although not for sure, that we wouldn't, that we would withdraw this application before we even get to the Zone, Board of Zoning Appeals. That is a possibility that you should be aware of.
Okay, appreciate that. Then I'm gonna turn, I guess, to Attorney Macy in terms of proper procedural thing. I mean, we've heard a request for denial from the petitioner, for to indicate that they may go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who, I mean, we've heard possible options to approve pending of positive action by the Board of Zoning Appeals on both of the issues. Do you have a recommended procedure for us to take at this point in time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me confirm, counsel has asked us to deny it? Why wouldn't you just withdraw it until this, and then get your...
I mean, if you deny it, doesn't that allow us to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals? We, we would have that route open to us.
Well, you'd be appealing to the Zoning Board of Appeals on the denial, or on the failure?
Well, you're denying based on our, on our failure to meet the provisions of the ordinance and our need for a variance in two different cases.
Wouldn't...
I don't think this board has the authority to issue a variance. Is that correct?
I think we'd agree with that, but wouldn't, would it, would it be improper for us simply not to take action on this until the Board of Appeals acts? Or is that not proven?
Our time limit will run. The Zoning Board of Appeals will, will take at least 60 to 90 days.
So we'd have to...
Because we've not met, they have to meet, they have to have training, it's, I think, a three-week to a four-week notice to get a date. My experience has been, a minimum, we get the Zoning Board of Appeals, 'cause they haven't met for quite a while, it's, it'll be 60 days.
So are you suggesting that the more prudent course would be for them to withdraw the request at this time, if they're willing to do that?
Well, I just don't wanna get us in a trap, and I'm not thinking counsel is doing this, but we deny it. If we deny it wrong, they sue us for a fault, for an improper denial, and we go to Circuit Court, and we lose, and they get their permit.
I understand.
And I'm not saying you would do that.
You're denying it for, we, we will stipulate you're denying it for appropriate purpose. We need a variance. We need two variances. We can't get that from this body. We understand that. So all we're asking, the reason we're asking for a denial is to give us the ability to go that route, should we choose to. We just submitted this alternative to Mr. Malarky, he hasn't had a chance to review it. We're pretty confident we're gonna use that one, but we're not prepared to withdraw this one until we can be more confident, more comfortable with it.
Let me ask, I guess, one other alternative with this kind of being in a state of flux, and we could look at the timing part of it. Is a possibility that we would simply adjourn the public hearing at this point in time till this sorts out?
We, we can't, 'cause our deadline is, is before the next meeting.
Oh, it is?
They granted us an extension to the, to what date?
Well, no extension's been granted yet. We did discuss this as a possibility with, with the petitioner. I don't remember. I originally asked for a 90-day extension. The petitioner had suggested that an extension of no more than 33 days might be appropriate. That would take us to November 12th, 2020, which would take us two more meetings from today. But that, that was...
However, or if you deny, you've denied today, correct? So we don't need an extension.
Then I have only one question, counsel, if I may. Just, I understand your position now, and thank you for your clarification. If it's denied, and you go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and just perchance it's, those are granted, you understand you'd have to reapply?
Absolutely. We understand we have to come back and go through the whole process of the CUP provisions, if we, if we get those two variances. We, we do understand that. And that's why, rather than take your time now for something that may never happen, for several reasons, we may not get the variances, or we may withdraw. Let's, let's just deny it and, and give us that path forward, should we choose it. I will tell you again that the odds of us choosing that path are, are small, assuming that, that we've submitted an application that Mr. Malarky finds to be complete and, and in compliance with your ordinance.
Mr. President, I'm comfortable, based on the representations of counsel, that the village is protected, and that a motion to, is it a motion, Mr. Malarky, to recommend to the town, Village Board to deny?
Right.
From the Plan Commission, based on the representations of counsel, and, and the failure to meet two of the conditions of the code?
I'm comfortable as well, but I think we'd first close the public hearing, would we not, and then act on this under item 13?
Yes, and see if anybody else wishes to speak, at some point.
Sure, okay. So we're still on item 12, which is the public hearing. Anybody else in the audience, or Plan Commission members or trustees want to speak at the public hearing at this point in time? Please, Commissioners Buchholz.
I have a question for Sean, if you can answer it even, or it may be something he wants to research in the meantime, but is, being this was a condominium, and there were restrictions put on that condominium, that no further development could happen without expansion of the roadway and such, is this even gonna be permitted at all?
Do you have an answer to that at this point in time?
I, I guess I do not have an answer. Off the top of my head, I can take a look at that.
Okay, good question. Any other questions, comments, anybody else choose to speak during the public hearing? If not, a motion from either a Plan Commission member, trustee, to close the public hearing at this point in time would be in order?
I'll make a motion to close a public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have got trustee German, the motion to close the public hearing, and we've got Commissioner Sisney on... we've got Commissioner Sisney on the second to close the public hearing. Everybody understands the motion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Assuming everyone voted, I have that as a vote of eight to nothing to close the public hearing. So we're on to item 13, discussion and possible action on conditional use for petitioner Keith Nyman, Agent Verizon, located at W-240 S-5197 Quincy Lane, tax key W-A-K-T-1401997009, to construct a 160-foot monopole cell tower with five-foot lightning rod above for the purposes of telecommunication services for Verizon Wireless and other wireless carrier slash service providers in the market. We're at discussion by the Plan Commission and Village Board. And then there's two separate items on this one, is plan of possible action by the Plan Commission and possible action by the Village Board. Counselor, would you maybe even help reframe the appropriate motion on that, as you see it, based on what was discussed during the public hearing?
On behalf of you, Mr. President, it would be a recommendation of the Plan Commission to deny the petition based on the fact that it does not meet the requirements of the village code and the representations of legal counsel for the petitioner. And I'll defer if Mr. Malarky has any other detail he'd like to add to that.
No, I do not.
Okay, so.
I'll move that motion.
Okay, so is there a second to the motion?
I can second that.
I wasn't listening. Who moved the motion? All right. So the motion was made by Commissioner Buchholz, seconded by Commissioner White. Any further discussion? Does everybody understand the motion? So the first vote will be by the Plan Commission, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So I have got six in favor of that and none opposed. So now it falls over to the Village Board. A motion to accept that recommendation from the Plan Commission would be in order, if you're inclined to go that direction?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by trustee German, seconded by trustee Kalinsky. Does everybody on the Village Board understand the motion? Further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I've got that as four in favor and none opposed. So we're done with that. Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening to you. Does somebody want to go and grab trustee Dur? Well, he's on his way in. One other, I guess, quick thing for Plan Commission and Village Board members, does anybody need a comfort stop here? Are we gonna try to power through that? You want a comfort stop? Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break for a comfort stop. We do want to move this along at, comfort stop at 8:30. We're moving forward at 8:35. Thank you.
I'm doing good.